All right. Thank you for your patience, ladies and gentlemen. By my watch, it shows at about 6:06 PM on December 8th. And our board's been in closed session since approximately about 4:30, also handling some community facilities, district business on several of the CFDs that we have in the school district. So with that, we're coming back into open session. And at this point, we'd like to honor our flag. And I'm asking that tonight's pledge of allegiance be led by Alexis Abelov. She's a junior and a varsity soccer player at Beckman High School. Let's give her a big hand.
Please stand for the flags. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Yes, I do have that. Yes, in closed session, the board did take some action. So that I'm going to read that. On a first, by Tammy Bullard, and a second, by Francine Cento, in terms of motions. Under Agenda Item 11, strike that, under Agenda Item Roman numeral 2A, the board met in closed session on Agenda Item Roman numeral 2A regarding an anticipated litigation matter. As part of the closed session discussion, the board approved a memorandum of understanding between the Tustin Unified School District and NTD Architecture. The MOU sets forth the architectural services that will be provided by NTD on various district projects. The action taken in closed session on Agenda Item Roman numeral 2A was four to zero. And the copies of the memorandum of understanding will be on file at the district and are available for public view this evening. So with that said, I would, we're coming to an exciting part of the meeting tonight. An exciting part of our democracy is that two of our, two of our board members have been reelected to service to the Tustin Unified School District. And so both of those distinguished gentlemen have spent a large amount of time serving the district as governing board members. First of all, that'd be Jonathan Abelov. He has served 20 years, and we are going to be swearing him in to his sixth term. And we'll also be swearing in Lynn Davis to his fourth term after serving 12 years as a board member. And with that, I'd like to say that there are some guests here that have been invited or have stopped by to congratulate, I'm sure these two, on their reelection to the board. And so tonight in our audience, I just want to recognize a few that are here. We have, we have Assemblyman Don Wagner, who will be giving the oath to those two incumbent board members. Assemblyman Don Wagner, thank you for being here. And we have our new mayor in town, Chuck Puckett. Mr. Puckett, thank you. Dr. Alan Bernstein, also on the city council. And Becky Gomez on the city councils. Becky here? Thank you, Becky. Appreciate it. So at this point, I would like to invite Jonathan Abelov and Lynn Davis to step to the center stage for the oath of the office. And I'm asking that their family members also attend the board members for the swearing in. And again, tonight, I'd have to say one more time, we're honored to have California State Assemblyman Don Wagner here to conduct the oath of office. Okay. Real quick, as a former trustee myself, I know how hard you guys work, how hard the entire board works, and how important that work is. So on behalf of our shared constituents, thank you so much for your service, and congratulations on some great electoral victories here. If you would please, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, I, Jonathan Abelov.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, gentlemen. As I said, we share constituents, and the service that you folks, not just you Lynn and Jonathan, but the entire board put in is above and beyond the call of duty, is very much recognized and very much appreciated by me and by those that I am privileged to serve. And I did want to take just a moment to present to both of you a certificate of recognition from the California State Assembly, recognizing the extraordinary service to our community. I have two certificates, one for each of you, presented to the honorable, and then I've got for each of you. And in honor of exceptional leadership and service to the teachers, students, and faculty of the Tustin Unified School District. Gentlemen, we do appreciate you. Thank you very much, Assemblyman Wagner. Appreciate it.
I just wanted to, we wanted to thank Assemblyman Wagner. We especially wanted Don to do this because this is a gentleman that gets it about education. He served three terms on South College Community College District, and was president several times, and went on from there to the assembly. And he's on the education committee, have been on the education committee. And Don gets it. He gets about local control, he pushes for it, he gets about basics, and he gets about the fact that we need to make sure that our kids are getting the best education and all the resources we can out of the state. And as he has said many a time over the years, we don't have a revenue problem in Sacramento, we have a spending problem in Sacramento. So I just want to thank you again for being here, Don. It's an honor to have been sworn in by you. Thank you.
Okay, yes, if you could, gentlemen, if you could wait one more. We have Cecilia with Mimi Walters' office. And Cecilia, I'm sorry, I forget your last name.
Iglesias.
Iglesias, okay. Thank you, Cecilia. And so we invite you up here to recognize Mr. Davis and Mr. Abelov. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Just want to congratulate you on your reelection, and thank you for the service that you're providing the community of Tustin. Senator Mimi Walters couldn't be here today, but she wanted for us to come here and acknowledge your reelection and also your public service. So on behalf of the state senate, we want to congratulate you with, we don't have that much money, so we have certificates. So Lynn, here you go. And then Jonathan, here you go. And I just want to say a quick note, too. I'm also on the school board in Santa Ana, so I know what it means to be on that board. And I just want to thank you for being patient and for also having the courage to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Iglesias. Appreciate it. Okay, so as Mr. Davis and Mr. Abelov return back to the dais, I can't, I would be completely remiss if I did not recognize both of their wives, who are amazing individuals. And I just want to recognize you for being just great supporters of your husbands in their stewardship, or their attempted to be stewards of the district. Because you, you back up them so much in so many ways, and we know both of you are so completely active on behalf of benefiting the school district. I would go on and on and on with all the endeavors you've done. You two are the Energizer bunnies of the district in terms of all the work you do. Okay, I don't get jealous over their Tustin Public Schools Foundation. These ladies do work very hard. So I, I'm recognizing Brenda Davis and Lori Abelov. And truly, if you go to some event where there needs to be a donation of your time, your talent, your treasure, everything's on the line, you will see Brenda Davis and Lori Abelov at that event for the school. And I, I've seen it the last 10 years I've been here. They're the real deal, and so I just want to acknowledge you two ladies as well, as well as Alexis, thanks a lot for showing up and supporting your father. I really appreciate that. So I think we're going on to board recognition at this point? Okay, so we're going to recognize some important people, some staff members as well as students in the Tustin Unified School District here on December 8th. And so I would like to bring up these representatives from the Tustin High School Model United Nations Program. I believe they're all seniors, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd like to ask Rehan Bukhari to come up, please. Sasha Chichavi? Ch- Chavvi? Ch- Chavvi, okay. Can you say her name for me?
Um, Chichov.
Okay, Chichov, okay. All right, good. Sakar Gupta. Samantha Landis. Olivia Lee. And Pranay Nudig. Is that correct? Nudig. Melissa Ontiveros. Amal Singh Hall. We're honoring these distinguished individuals for their membership in the Model United Nations Program. Tustin is a national model throughout the United States for this program. It's an exemplary school that hosts this program and has very distinguished students involved in orchestrating this program at Tustin High every year, in and out. And so we're going to honor them for coordinating and hosting the school's 22nd Annual Model United Nations Conference on November 22nd and 23rd. Over 1,400 students from more than 30 high schools throughout the state and 150 parent volunteers participated in the two-day event held in the Tustin High Sports Pavilion. In addition, approximately 17 students and several teachers from the Czech Republic were in attendance this year. The school's annual student-run conference is the largest Model United Nations Conference held west of the Mississippi. Through debate and collaboration, Model United Nations students discussed a variety of international topics, global issues, and current events. Individual and group awards were presented to students in several categories, including Best Research, Commendation, Outstanding Delegate, Best Delegate Awards, along with Large and Small School Delegation Awards. This group of talented students served as the high secretariat at the Model United Nations Conference. Shakar, Director General of Advanced Committees. Rehan, Director General of Crisis and Specialized Committees. Sasha, Director General of Crisis and Specialized Committees. Pranay, Director General of Novice Committees and Secretary General. Melissa, Director General of Novice Committees. Samantha, Director General of Logistics and Operations and Secretary General. Olivia, Director General of Logistics and Operations and Secretary General. And Amal, Director General of School Relations and Secretary General. Tustin High School Model United Nations seniors were involved in several projects this year, including onsite peer instructional technology support for laptops and devices, middle school Model United Nations tutoring and coaching, and peer counseling and support. The opening ceremonies at the Model United Nations Conference highlighted their capstone service project in India. Tustin High School's Model United Nations academic program is celebrating its 25th year and offers an opportunity for students to simulate the activities of the United Nations organization. Students learn skills in researching, writing, negotiating, speaking, and debating. Nearly 200 students range from top honors to special needs students who participate in the program. Students compete at local, state, and international levels. The Model United Nations teacher advisors include David Waldrum, Eleanor Ezekiel, and Kevin Treivik? Treifik? Oh, wow. You know, this is my last day announcing things as president, and they couldn't make it harder on me with all these names, okay? This is my favorite name here, Roland Jones. Or is it Joness? No, I think it's Roland Jones, I believe. Okay, I know it's Roland Jones, just trying to crack a joke there. Okay, over the years, Tustin High School's Models United Nations team has ranked among the strongest in the nation. The team will compete internationally in, or at Prague's John Naruda School in January, and nationally at Duke University. I know I got Duke right, okay? Duke University in February, and UC Berkeley in March. And I know you're going to make a brief presentation here in a second. I just want to let you know that I believe Mr. Davis and myself, we were there at your opening ceremonies, and I was extremely impressed with the operation. It's a student-run operation. The teachers are advisors, but the students run it. It's a corporation run by students, and so it's all done by them, and it's for them to succeed or to fail. And so it really is an amazing operation, and I think we're going to see, we're going to see some evidence of that in the presentation. And so now, as to the MUN students, if you ever heard about it, Model United Nations also, if you're in that, you're also a MUN'er, okay? So that's a little bit of a nomenclature. These MUN'ers would like to make a brief presentation about the conference and share a short video. And to Sasha.
First of all, we would like to just say thank you on behalf of our MUN team at Tustin High for this recognition, and thank you for your constant support of our program. So now we're going to tell you a little bit about what we do and why we do it. MUN, or Model United Nations, is a debate program based on the structure of the real United Nations, where students strive to solve global issues. However, it is much more. For each one of us, MUN was something that drew us to Tustin High, and it was a great factor in our decisions to attend. When we first entered high school, we didn't think that anything would ever lead us to be in charge of this many people. I am sure that I speak not only for myself when I say that both planning and presiding over 1,500 delegates, a 1,500 delegate conference was quite a thrill. As we reflected upon how far each of us has come, not only as MUN delegates, but as students, leaders, and individuals, due to this program, we earned new gratitude and respect for the annual Tustin Conference and what it means to be a part of high secretariat. The interest, passion, and versatility of the delegates was very impressive, and it was amazing to see what MUN has done in the lives of others around us. Watching this conference develop over the past year and seeing it come together was very fulfilling and renewed our sense of the word leadership.
As leaders of this conference, we have been working tirelessly from the end of last school year through summer break and up until the conference in November. There is so much work that goes into organizing such a large event, and managing this along with schoolwork is difficult. But each and every one of us would say that it was all worth it to see such a successful conference completed. MUN is not just a program that teaches you how to research or debate or speak. It is the only program of its kind that builds the confidence of participants, creates global citizens, and allows us to apply the skills we have learned to something larger than ourselves. In addition to this conference, MUN has given us the opportunity to serve our community on both the local and international level. Please direct your attention to the screen for a more detailed introduction of our nonprofit organization, Breaking Barriers.
Imagine applying your Model United Nations skills to the real world.
Imagine expanding your influence beyond the borders of your school walls.
Imagine reaching out to the people around you who are in need.
Imagine learning from other people's stories and experiences.
Imagine putting your plans and ideas into action and reaching your full potential.
Students from THS MUN faced with a great test. They were challenged with the job of taking on the international community and making a difference with no bounds.
They searched far and wide for funds and people in need.
Searching for people beyond their typical reach to help them.
Some decided to aid their local community.
Because you don't have to go around the world to make something happen.
MUN has started to help people change the world.
And now we are putting our knowledge into action.
MUN is not just a model anymore.
Let's take it a step further, stop using our imaginations, and make something happen.
Many students in developed areas take their education for granted. Sometimes we even have the audacity to resent it. However, have you ever stopped to think about what your life would be like without school? It prepares students to be successful and to find their own paths in life. Breaking Barriers began as an idea for our MUN capstone project and has quickly grown into a mission to equip disadvantaged students with the tools of literacy and critical thinking.
The Breaking Barriers mission statement is providing the tools for a lifetime of academic prosperity. We strive to create opportunities for children who don't have the same chances of success. In underprivileged nations, young kids and even teenagers our age have to focus on caring for their families, finding their next meal, and staying healthy. They do not have the means to learn or excel in education, and that is what we're trying to change.
To kickstart our project, we spread the news about our mission at cultural fairs, fundraised at school events like open house, and held interclass competitions. By funding on and off campus, we were able to reach multiple audiences and inform both students and adults about our goals. Throughout the first three months of fundraising, we had managed to collect about $2,000 to begin the first official Breaking Barriers project.
Over the summer, we arranged a partnership with a nonprofit organization called Averata, which works to provide notebooks and other learning materials to children in destitute locations. One of our group members, who has family in India, traveled there and put our money to use. Our primary project as Breaking Barriers allowed us to provide notebooks for students in over 10 different schools.
For our next project, we plan on working with an organization in Prague, Czech Republic, to reach out to other underprivileged students in the area. Our MUN competition team will be traveling there this January, and we hope to take a day or so to help distribute supplies and aid schools in any other way possible. But we can only get there with your help.
In your committee rooms, you will find jars. Use these to collect any spare change, dollar bills, and anything else that you can give to help support the education and success of these children. The committee that collects the most money will get a prize at the end of the day.
If you're interested in learning more about the Breaking Barriers project, please follow us on Twitter @BreakingBarriersPR and Instagram @BreakingBarriersProject. Like our Facebook page, Breaking Barriers Project, and take a look at our website, www.breakingbarriersproject.com.
If you have any questions, comments, concerns, or interests, email breakingbarriersproject@gmail.com. Thanks for watching.
In our MUN class period, we were given the opportunity to initiate a capstone project. Capstone projects are based around community service and furthering the skills taught in MUN. Some decided to aid their local community by either starting an MUN club at the local middle schools or providing technological assistance to students at THS. Our project, Breaking Barriers, aims to provide the materials for successful education to children who normally would not be able to access them. This summer, I traveled to India to see the project through to the end. Breaking Barriers teamed up with Averata, a nonprofit organization in Karnataka. I traveled with the team to distribute the notebooks, and I was so shocked to see how little these children had. Providing them with the basic school supplies meant the world to them, and I realized we take so much for granted. This project was a gratifying experience. Understanding that we were part of something so impactful was very humbling. Without MUN, we would not be able to complete such a project. MUN has enabled us with leadership skills and has helped us find the passion to do something in the world that matters. We, the Breaking Barriers team, have promised to continue impacting the community as we enter college and beyond. Thank you.
to come up here shortly, because they will be recognized for their years of service in the Tustin Unified School District and valuable contributions to the youth of this community and to our community as a whole. So at this point, I'd like to invite up Carla Schwer to come forward. Congratulations, Carla. Okay, Carla is a school secretary at Myford Elementary School. She is being recognized for 29 years of service all in the Tustin Unified School District. That's a big deal. Mrs. Schwer joined the district in 1985 and began as a clerk typist at Hillview High School. The following year, she became school secretary at Hillview and remained in that position for several years. In 2001, Mrs. Schwer joined Nancy Lev and helped out open Myford Elementary School as its first school secretary. During her time at Myford, the school has received much acclaim and was named a California Distinguished School three times, in 2006, 2010, and 2014. Mrs. Schwer's friendly and helpful demeanor over the years has made Myford School a welcoming place for all its students, staff, parents, and school community. And so I'm going to ask you to remain, because I'm going to bring up a buddy of yours, okay? And now I'm going to ask and invite up Nancy Lev to come forward. Nancy Lev, Director of Elementary Education with our Educational Services Division in the district office, and we're recognizing her 19 years of service in the Tustin Unified School District and her 39 years of service in education. Congratulations, Nancy. Mrs. Lev began her career in the ABC School District in Saratoga. Is that true, ABC? I thought that might be a typo, but you are correct. Okay. At least all your students could spell it, right? Okay. So, the ABC Unified School District in Saratoga is where Nancy got her start, and she worked as a bilingual teacher, a Title VII facilitator, project coordinator, assistant principal, and elementary school principal. She came to TUSD in 1995 and served as principal of Jean Thorman Elementary School. In 2001, Mrs. Lev helped open Myford Elementary School as its first school principal. The same year, she also received the Irvine Company's 2001 Principal of Excellence Award. Under her leadership, Myford was named California Distinguished School in 2006. Two years later, in 2008, Mrs. Lev was promoted to Director of Elementary Education for our district. Due to her hard work and success, Mrs. Lev was named 2012 Orange County Curriculum and Instruction Administrator of the Year by the Association of California School Administrators, also known as ACSA, R-Region 17. And so, I'd just like to acknowledge you and all your service to the district, both you ladies. You know, we talk, you've heard my theme this year about just, these are a lot of years of service, and in aggregate, it makes a big impact to see you retire. We just, we know we got new people coming into the ranks, but we really appreciate all your service. And we really, we really do. And so, we have another presentation. I'd like to invite Tustin Public Schools Foundation President Margie Spolveda to come forward, please.
About a lot of years. Well, I just have a few words, surprisingly enough. I'm lucky enough to know most of these wonderful people, and I remember Carla way back when, and Nancy when she first arrived in Tustin. And we'd like to thank you both for everything you've done to help us be a successful organization, because it takes our wonderful support staff and our wonderful principals and our wonderful directors to make it all happen. So, on behalf of the foundation, thank you very much. So...
Okay, thank you, Margie. I'd also like to please invite the Tustin School Management Association President Eric Feinberg to come forward for a special presentation. Is Mr. Feinberg here? Oh, it's separate? Okay. Okay, one of my favorite principals in the district, Eric Feinberg, would you please come forward? Principal of Curry and Thorman, double duty.
So, on behalf of the Tustin School Management Association, we would like to recognize James Laird for his time as president of the board. I've had the opportunity to get to know Mr. Laird quite well through a GRIP program that we did together at Bezwick, and also through coming to meetings like this. Your humor at the helm of the, at the board meetings is, has been thoroughly enjoyed by all of us, and you've put quite a few smiles. I remember at the end of last year, that was a stand-up comedic performance you gave. That was unbelievable. So, thank you so much for bringing us all joy and for your care. That really makes a big difference. Thank you.
I just want to thank the Tustin School Management Association. I really appreciate all your support this year, and it's great working with you. Mr. Feinberg. Okay, now we're at the part of our agenda, Board Organization, Subdivision Four, and that's the election of governing board officers for 2014. And the first matter of business is going to be an election of a new board president that will serve from December through 2014 and all the way through 2015. And is there a motion and a second for a new president for the next, for the next term?
I will move that we make Francine Cento our president.
I will second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for making Francine Cento president for the next term. All in favor, say aye. Aye, the ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have good news. We're gonna elect a couple of officers. I'm gonna make a few comments, and then we're gonna take a break for everybody. So, we need a motion for Board Vice President.
Make a motion for Mr. Davis.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and a motion for Board Clerk.
I make a motion for Mr. Abelov?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're on our way. I'm just gonna make a few comments on the year. It's the end of the year, and it's a changing of the guard, and under Mr. Laird's leadership, we've had a fantastic year. It's been a year of high achievements by our students and learning by our faculty and staff. We rolled out the TUSD Connect Learning Initiative, which has new standards and strategies, and our students continue to matriculate to the best universities in the nation. Some of the highlights of this year, we had eight California Distinguished Schools. I'm not even gonna name them all, because this list would get really boring if I did, all the things that have gone on, is the most schools, most distinguished schools we've ever had in a single year, eight, and it was the most in Orange County. In addition, we had TMA, Tustin Memorial, being an exemplary physical activity school. Many of our accomplishments that we feel most proud of are those where we've taken schools that have high percentages of students who are socio-economically disadvantaged, and those schools are stunning performers. This year, the Title I Academic Achievement School by the California Department of Ed was Bezwick Elementary and Curry Middle School. Bezwick was also named a California Distinguished School, as well as a Title I Academic Achieving School, and that's really an incredible achievement. And Curry was the only public middle school in the entire state to be awarded the Title I Academic Achievement Honor. We had 18 schools, which is over half the schools, that were elected as honor roll schools by the California Business for Education Excellence Foundation. So, that's over half our schools. Tustin High School was declared a 2014 Avid National Demonstration School. Our graduation rate, which we're very proud of, is at 96.8%, which is 10 points higher than the county and, you know, 27 points higher than the state. So, we are successful in graduating our students. We, for the fifth consecutive year, we reported an increase in the number of college-bound seniors who took the SAT. And again, you will hear about increasing opportunity and increasing the number of students who take SATs and achieve. We had the most ever students take advanced placement tests and the most ever AP exams. And with all of that, you might expect that our pass rate would peter off, but we had an 81% pass rate. And again, we're encouraging more students to try to achieve at higher levels, and they're succeeding. And this was just a banner year. On international baccalaureate, we had a 91% pass rate. We have our engineering programs at Tustin and Foothill continuing to gain accolades. Beckman High has a media arts academy and hosted the first Southern California Film Festival. We expanded STEM, which is Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, to all our secondary schools, and we deployed 18,700 devices, 11,000 iPads and 7,630 laptops. It's the beginning of a long process of deploying technology in the schools. But perhaps the most important part are the 100 teachers who have been coached on a weekly basis by our 13 digital learning coaches on implementing instructional technology. So, it's not just deploying devices, it's coaching our teachers on how to use it and really making it happen. We had a great partnership with Toyota. We had 150 seniors from, out of the 1,600 at all of our high schools, who had perfect attendance, and the reward was that one of them won a Toyota at graduation. So, that... Sports, Beckman High School had two CIF Southern Section Division winners, both boys and girls golf. Foothill had a lacrosse Southern Sectional CIF championship team. And our staff, Joanna Vandal was the 2014 Teacher Advocacy Award for the Avid Program. She is from Tustin High. Our lead nurse, Lynn Rogers, was the 2014 Orange County Nurse of the Year. And then, there's our administrators. The Orange County ACSA, which you heard about before, it's the school administrators, R-Region. Adele Hoyer of Beckman High School was the Secondary Principal of the Year, and our superintendent, Greg Franklin, was the Orange County Superintendent of the Year. And then, Superintendent Franklin was selected as the 2014 California Superintendent of the Year. And that's, there are over 1,000 superintendents in California and representing 19 regions, and our own Dr. Franklin was, is the Superintendent of the Year. So, that... And in facilities, we continue to work with Measure L, and we never gave up. We continued deferred maintenance. We completed $14 million worth of projects, most notably the Tustin High School Cafeteria and Building 300, and the Hughes Middle School Science Labs, and some renovations at the Tustin, Foothill Gym and Library. So, that's just a short summary of everything that was accomplished in the year that James was Board President. I just want to say that our community is very lucky to have someone like James, not only because he's very funny and entertaining, but he, you know, he was the head of the, you know, he's an assistant district attorney, and he was the head of the West Court, which, you know, is like over in Westminster somewhere, and he works and kills himself and then runs back, you know, now he's gotten transferred to San Ana. But he's a very, very busy person with a lot of responsibility, and yet, he chooses to serve on his local school board. So, I think we've been very fortunate to have him. And... Do you like to make a few comments?
I'd just like to make a few comments. You know, the landscape constantly has to change. That we, as human beings, what comes ahead of us changes, and we have to react to it. And so, I'd like to just talk about a few, a few big changes are, one thing that's just huge to me, and it's huge to this board, and that's the recognition that there are three city council members sitting in here tonight, you know, joining in the, let's just call it a celebration, you know, of the schools and of the, you know, the new, the incumbents being reelected and getting new terms. That's a huge deal, and I want to recognize you being here, because, you know, we know it's been tough for a while. It had been tough. We went through some tough times, but we really feel blessed that the chemistry's right right now. There's the right people in the right places, and I really genuinely feel that both of, both of our, you know, enterprises really want to work with one another. And so, you being here is important, and it's a testimony to the way things have changed. I love seeing you folks out on the road. Oftentimes, the board members will bump into the city council at events, and it's very congenial, and I really appreciate being able to, you know, have a good conversation with you all, whether it's just, just small talk or it's on policy. So, I really appreciate that. And please let, you know, everybody know, especially Al Murray, I think, I think he did an amazing job. He was the mayor last year, very eloquent man. He puts together words in a really nice way, makes a lot of people in our community feel good about itself, and he's also a person that doesn't, knows that talk is cheap. He also backs it up with action, and I just think he did a fantastic job as mayor. And so, I wish you the best in 2015. I hope we can work together again and just continue on with that, with that positive relationship. And then, the other thing that I, that I would add is that I've been in the, been doing this for 10 years now, and I do feel a blessing that I look out at really everybody, and I actually have a list. I looked over of our, you know, we have a master telephone list of everybody at the district, all the principals, all the teachers, you know, everybody from maintenance and operations to nutrition services to payroll, personnel, technology, assessment and evaluation, accounting. We got the mailroom, we have educational services, business services, energy facilities, youth services, health services. It goes on and on and on. It's, we operate a major corporation here, and, and everybody, where we go, especially when we go to these, the California School Board conferences, everybody recognizes Tustin as just being a pioneer. And it's, up here, we do very little of that. We help maybe guide the rudder a little bit, but it's really all these people in these enterprises, these departments that do such a, such a great amount of work for our district and make it operate, you know? You gotta remember, we put 25,000 kids in chairs every morning to learn and, you know, to have a productive day. I mean, that's a huge, huge undertaking. And so, it's just very important to note that. And the blessing that I feel is that, you know, Francine mentioned about, you know, there was a crossroads where I decided to run, and it's been, that's been the biggest deal to me, is the intersection with all you people, all these people I mentioned, all these departments. I never would have intersected with you people, gotten to know you people, how great you are, without, you know, jumping into a different little area of my life that I've really prized. And being able to be with folks like you has been just, just done tremendous good in my life, so I really appreciate that. And then, I want to make, the last comment is, is just, the theme this year was on connection. We had bright spots in how we are being connected with technology. And I want to visit something that I thought up in the middle of the year. I've said it, I think, a couple times at a couple events. But connectedness is just very important, that we play as a team, that we work as a team, whether you're a business person, you're a student, you're a teacher, you're a staffer, you're a superintendent, we gotta be on the same team. And the one thing that I thought about connectedness a while back, and we talked about being connected together, I thought, there's no better symbol of that than a chain link. We all know what a chain link is, right? It's a chain of, you know, of links that hold something together. And so, we've all heard that famous saying of, you know, okay, the chain is not stronger than its weakest link, okay? It will never be stronger than its weakest link. And I've asked people to think about it differently, because I think our district exemplifies this. You're also not as strong. You can never be as strong or stronger than your strongest links, okay? So, you're always after making your links stronger and stronger and stronger. And so, what I urge people to do, and I think I've seen it and witnessed this as president, because president goes out in the community a little bit more and sees a little bit more of what the schools are doing than, at least I do as president, more so than when I'm just a board member, just part of the job. But you see these, these people that are links in our community that are doing this heavy lifting. They're doing heavy lifting. And I, the vision that I had of these links is it's like titanium, tungsten, and steel, okay? That's my term. I didn't vent into that, okay? I didn't, nobody borrow, I didn't borrow that from Martin Luther King or anybody. That's my saying, okay? Titanium, tungsten, steel. And I looked, I looked it up at referencedesk.com. These are the strongest metals around. We make our nuclear submarines with this stuff, okay? This stuff is impermeable, okay? This stuff is strong. And so, I just appreciate people going after that goal in this district. I think people don't just sit here and just say, okay, I'm doing well. I want, people are always saying, I want to do better. And in this, this digital age, this challenge that we're undertaking, which is amazing, we are one of the pioneers in the United States right now. we are one of the pioneers in the United States right now. We are holding conferences for the rest of the people, educators in the United States to come to Tustin to figure out how, you know, to pass a bond for technology, how to implement it, how to be wise with our resources and things like that. And so I just think it's a, it's a very, very important time and I appreciate being part of it and thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We'll take a little break. Thank you to all the brave souls who are still with us. Okay, were we convening with, or do we have any staff response to public comments?
Not this evening.
Okay, do we have any public comments? I see we have Roger Cavigan who would like to address us?
I think if, we have the report still.
That's, did I?
We're on five.
Oh, I have to go back.
Go back to five.
Okay. Okay, no, it's because it's Beck. Starting off on a bright note, okay, Paris, would you like to, our student board members from Beckman, Paris?
Tustin, all right. Good evening, President Sinto, members of the board, Superintendent Franklin, district staff, and members of the audience. It is my pleasure tonight to present you Beckman High School's monthly report. With the holiday spirit in full swing, Beckman has been bustling with activities. Our band and orchestra had amazing winter concert performances last week. Our choral holiday concert is also next week on December 18th and the next day on December 19th. Many of our classes will attend a reprise of the concert during school. Our students also attended our dance team's winter showcase and enjoyed the much anticipated traditional co-ed dance. Our second club food day is going to be held this Friday, the 12th, as our clubs are working hard to keep the food healthy and fun. On another note, this Wednesday night, we have our ninth and 10th grade Be Prepared for College evening, where our counselors will hold a presentation and answer questions to help guide parents through the college process. Technology continues to create a positive impact on Beckman. All of this week, all students are participating in an hour of code in their science classes and hope to get students interested in learning to code. In addition, our students and staff are excited about our Beckman Tech Team. The team consists of 18 students and is still growing, trained by Beckman's digital learning coach, Mrs. Kirch. The goal's to create a program which functions similar to Apple's Genius Bar, with our team in the library before school, at break and lunch, and after school to assist students in need. Also, the team is creating tech tutorials, where teams of students go to classes for short tutorials to help students who are unfamiliar with the new technology. With our fall sports finishing up their season banquets, we're very excited for our winter sports. Our boys and girls soccer teams are off to a great start. The boys have then, with a, sorry, with a three-in-one record. Our wrestling team and boys and girls basketball teams are also off to strong starts with the boys' basketball record of three-in-one. We are excited, we are excited to see our Beck Maniacs student section cheer on our teams and boost school spirit at our upcoming home basketball games this Wednesday and Friday. Beckman is off to a strong end to a great semester and is looking forward to a much-needed winter break. Thank you for all your time and go Patriots.
Okay, Kashami from Foothill High School?
Good evening, President Sinto, members of the board, Superintendent Franklin, district staff, and members of the audience. It is my pleasure tonight, pleasure tonight to present to you the Foothill High School Report for the month of December. The holiday spirit has taken over Foothill this month. Our famous Dickens carolers have practiced diligently to perform for a month of singing traditional carols in many concerts, including ones at Tustin Senior Center, the Pacific Symphony, the Black Marlin, Ronald McDonald House, and the Chamber of Commerce. They'll come back to Foothill to perform an annual winter concert, December 16th, along with all of the Foothill choirs. In the same spirit, Foothill's dance team performed their winter showcase Friday, December 5th, in the Event Center. Dancing to holiday tunes and the carols of our choir, our JV and varsity dance teams put on a great display of their talent. I'd also like to recognize Foothill's CIF Champions, Varsity Boys Water Polo, who celebrated their championship game this month and their winning first place in league. This is the third CIF championship under Coach Brum, who said that their winning season was made possible because the boys set high goals and worked to achieve them through good team chemistry and daily training. Additionally, Foothill advanced up to quarterfinals in CIF, marking the end of fall sports. Winter sports, which began this month, include girls' and boys' soccer, girls' water polo, girls' and boys' wrestling, and girls' and boys' basketball. Boys' basketball has their first home game this Friday, December 12th. They've had a 5-0 record so far in season and won the Jim Harris Memorial Tournament Championship last weekend. Our students are excited to cheer them on for another year in the dungeon, newly renovated with black bleachers and a brand-new floor. Winter is tournament season at Foothill. Our dodgeball tournament finished with the competitive finals game, ensuring the tradition will continue on to next year. This week, December 8th to 12th, students participate in a friendly footsle tournament. Also this week, our annual Mr. Foothill Pageant takes place this Thursday, December 11th. Seven highly qualified senior boys participate in a male beauty pageant, this year with a 50's twist. A panel of judges, including Foothill teachers, administrators, and Tustin High co-president Amanda Nguyen, will determine the winner. This concludes the Foothill High School Report. Warmest wishes for a happy holidays. Go Knights.
Amanda, Tustin High School.
Good evening, President Sinto, members of the board, Superintendent Franklin, district staff, and members of the audience. It is my pleasure tonight to present the report for Tustin High School. Since we last met in November, the Tustin Taylors have engaged in numerous activities. Our highly anticipated 22nd Annual MUN Conference went smoothly as always, with a whopping 1,500 delegates from schools all over Southern California. This year, 15 students from Prague had the opportunity to travel to California to participate in the conference, as well as get a taste of our cool California lifestyle. Another annual event that took place throughout last month was our Tiller Joe's canned food drive. So far, we have collected over 2,000 non-perishable food items to support our local families in need this holiday. Two weeks ago, over 300 of our seniors attended our Funny Hypnosis Senior Munch, which included breakfast and a hypnotist show. We immensely enjoyed watching the hypnotists make our peers and teachers perform some highly unusual acts, but we'll leave that up to your imagination. In late November, Tustin High's Marine Biology Club took a field trip to the Aquarium of the Pacific, where we were able to come in close contact with sea life, as well as explore and learn about the conservation and beauty of hundreds of different sea creatures. Up and coming events this month, this month of December included, includes Tustin High's music programs, Combined Band Orchestra and Choir Winter Concert this Thursday at 7:00. Also this Thursday, December 11th, in the Old Gym, Tustin High will be holding the year's Second Blood Drive to continue to give back during the holiday season. Tustin High's cooperation with live-stream blood donations is greatly valued as one of the organization's most successful high schools when it comes to units of blood collected. On December 18th, in the newly remodeled Tiller Kitchen, Tustin High's Jazz Band will be holding their winter concert for all to enjoy a mixture of jazz and holiday fun. This Friday, the 12th, our national championship dance team and all male will host their annual dance winter show in the sports pavilion. This event gives family and friends the opportunity to see just how talented their students are. Lastly, during the week from Monday, December 15th to Friday, December 19th, the Tiller Student Body will be participating in our Holiday Spirit Week. Dress-up days will include Snow Day Monday, Candy Cane Tuesday, Pyjama Day, Holiday Hat Thursday, and Ugly Christmas Sweater Friday. All of this spirit will lead up to this, to the Friday's Winter Assembly, where our ASB will put up a great show in order to send off our students to a safe and happy holiday break. This concludes the report from Tustin High. Thank you, happy holidays, and go Tillers.
Okay.
Our student board member from Beckman High.
All right. Good evening, President Sinto, members of the board, Superintendent Franklin, district staff, and members of the audience. It is my pleasure tonight to present to you the District Board Report on holiday spirit in our schools. This season, the elementary school students have set the precedent that giving is more fulfilling than receiving. At Hicks Canyon, Gwen Foss, Benson, Arroyo, Hydman, Loma Vista, and Nelson Elementary Schools, the Ripple Kids, CDCs, and student councils have come together with the California Highway Patrol, Team Kids, Macy's, Make-A-Wish, and ABC7 to put on toy and book drives. At Nelson and Benson, the students will collect and pack the gifts into a big yellow bus. From there, the gifts will be sent to less fortunate children in Santa Ana. In addition to a local toy drive, Arroyo students will reach outside their community and collect shoes to donate to residents of a small village in Mexico. Meanwhile, Bezwick and Ladera, the students are participating in food drives for the Tustin Salvation Army and Second Harvest Food Bank. At Ladera, each class will participate in creating their own unique sturdy castle out of the cans. The school-wide activity is meant to symbolize strength and remind the students that they are linked to people who have helped and supported them. At the middle schools, students have been kept even busier in hopes to give in all they can during the holiday season. The PRA Assistance Leadership Group at Pioneer has held a sweater drive for the homeless, animal drive for the Irvine Animal Shelter, and candy drive for the USS Nemets Soldiers' Children. In addition, PAL has also held fundraisers for the American Cancer Society and Tourette's Syndrome, in which proceeds were donated to the foundations. As of now, the PAL students are preparing to sing holiday songs at two senior homes and at the Tustin Air Hospital on December 18th. Also at Pioneer, the student body participated in a toy drive and pop-top collection for the children staying at the Orange County Ronald McDonald House this holiday season. Before winter break, Pioneer's band, orchestra, and choir will put on their annual holiday performances. And at Hughes Middle School, the California Junior School Federation is holding a toy and gift card drive in which the donations will be given to families in need. As for the high school students, teenagers have shocked parents everywhere by proving there's still one thing they are not too cool for, giving back to the community. At Beckman High School, the students participated in a successful canned food drive in collaboration with the Orange County Food Bank. And meanwhile, the Wounded Warrior Club is working with Beckman's English Department to write letters for the troops at Camp Pendleton, who will not be home for the holidays. At Tustin, the student body is participating in the Tiller Joe's food drive. And at Hillview, the students are collaborating with Adult Education and Sycamore High School to put on a holiday Sunday supper on December 24th, 21st. A holiday meal, take-home groceries, stockings, and a store of free donated items will be available for more than 200 families in need. This concludes my report and I hope that everyone has a joyful holiday season with their family and friends. But most importantly, I urge that we all take after the students and find a way to give back to those who are less fortunate than us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bianca. That was inspiring. And we will excuse you in just a moment after we have our superintendent's report.
Good evening. It's very brief, Mrs. Sinto. Congratulations on being president and I think it's congratulations. You'll do a terrific job, I know. Thanks to Mr. Laird. It's been a pleasure working with you this year in that capacity and you've done tremendous work. We appreciate it very much. And congratulations to Mr. Davis and Mr. Abalov for your reelection and we look forward to your continued leadership on the board. It's been a terrific group to work with, which all of us on the staff appreciate. I do want to make mention, one of the students, I think, said something about the Hour of Code that's going on this week. It's a national program to try and highlight the importance of computer programming. And so we have schools throughout the district doing a variety of activities. It's called an Hour of Code, but really there's activities going on throughout the week. And there's a great website that I want to mention because it has activities that, whether or not a student's teacher and school is doing an activity on coding, it's easy to do at home. And that is code, C-O-D-E dot org. And there's a lot of self-taught, simple coding activities. And learning the code is not necessarily the objective so much as learning how computer languages work with the sort of logical thinking. And it's arguably maybe as important as learning a world language now is to learn a computer language. So we're trying to expose more and more of our students to that so that they can at least know the options that they have for entering that sort of work as adults. With that, I hope everybody has a great holiday. Thanks so much.
Okay. And with that, I'd like to excuse our student board members. Report, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay, but we like to let you off the hook. Okay, and I think we can move on to public comments. Mr. Cavigan, is he still here?
I'm still here. Congratulations, President Sinto, on your election. So I look forward to working with you as well. First of all, I was going to say it was great to have two of the school board members at the CTA-sponsored school board dinner this year. It's actually, it was really nice to know that both Jonathan and Lynn are actually very, very funny people. It's nice to know what you're actually doing on those computer screens while we're all sitting out there in the audience. We'll leave that joke alone for right now. But in any case, also, we've been working with Chuck Lewis on informal meetings with our association to work out some of the little glitches along the way. And these informal meetings have been very, very helpful in working through some of our problems as they arrive. So thank you very much, Mr. Lewis, for all of that. And then finally, just to keep our meeting a little on the shorter side, TEA would also like to commemorate the second-year anniversary this week of the Sandy Hook Elementary School tragedy and to acknowledge the dedication of teachers to their craft and to the care of their students. So I didn't want to be remiss and not acknowledge those teachers that died in the course of their duty to their students. So thank you.
Okay. In the continuing effort to go out of order, I realize that we skipped the presidential appointments. So I just want to ask whether anyone is requesting any changes to our usual and customary. If not, I will appoint the same list that we had from last year? Okay. And we've done staff response, we've done public comments? Okay, on to discussion action. First interim financial report.
Give a second for the ladies to come up and get the presentation going. So starting, Madam President, members of the board, tonight we'll be presenting an overview of the district's 2014-15 First Interim Budget Report. The theme of our presentation will focus on the actual fiscal fitness of the district. So for tonight's presentation, we're going to be discussing the changes that have occurred since the adoption of the state budget, changes to our own district budget, as well as reviewing the district's revenue and expenditure projections and current revenues received, as well as point out some of the key planning factors that ensure the district's fiscal health, as well as going over the district's multi-year projection, and finally reviewing the district's, or the impact of SB 858 and how it will impact and affect the components, how we report the components to the ending fund balance. So with regards to the state budget, since the state budget has been adopted, the state economy has actually improved. On November 4th, the voters passed Proposition 2, which established the state's rainy day fund. There have been legislation also affecting employer obligations and providing for sick leave for all employees. The federal government has also recently announced their updated sequestration rates. And the new regulations regarding the LCAP have been approved by the state and now in place for the development of the upcoming budget for next year. So looking at the state economy, what we do know is that the legislative analyst has come out with his report on the forecast for the next year. And it shows basically that there's a significant revenue increase and consequently increase in Prop 98 funding guarantee over the next three years. Cash collections over the past two months have actually exceeded projections, again indicating a strong economic growth. Overall, Prop 98 guarantee outlook is especially favorable according to the Legislative Analyst Office. And then with regards to the rainy day fund, the passage of Proposition 2 also created a public school system stabilization account, better known as the Education Rainy Day Fund. The proposition triggers a reduction in school district reserve levels if the state makes a contribution to the Education Rainy Day Fund. However, this contribution can only be made with, when the following events all have to occur. First, all Prop 98 maintenance factor obligations are paid. Currently, that obligation sits at $6.6 billion. Capital gains tax must exceed 8% of the state's general fund revenues. Capital gains tax must exceed 8% of the state's general fund revenues. It's happened only seven times in the past 16 years. Prop 98 calculation is based on a test one basis, and that has only occurred three times since Prop 98 came into being back in 1988. And then finally, Prop 98 guarantee must not be suspended, and that's only happened twice in history. So should all these events actually occur, in the fiscal year immediately after the contribution is made to the education rainy day fund, school districts would be prohibited from carrying a combined general fund reserve in excess of two times the minimum. For TUSD, that would be approximately 6%. The good news is that basically, based on the legislative analyst's projections for the foreseeable future, the state is not likely to make those contributions and have those triggers come into effect. And now Diana will go over basically AB 1522.
Thank you, Toni. AB 1522 provides up to 24 hours or three days of paid sick leave for previously ineligible employees who work 30 or more days in a calendar year. This means that employees hired as substitutes or other short-term assignments may now be eligible to earn sick leave. Aside from the obvious cost increase, is additional work necessary to continually track employees to determine who qualifies for this benefit? The federal sequestration cut was announced for fiscal year 1516 at .0554%, which is reduced from the previous year of 5.2%. This increase lessens the squeeze on our federal education funding. It's important to keep in mind that this Budget Control Act provision is in effect until 2023. Title I and Special Education are the primary recipients of the increased funding. So we're ready to play ball when it comes to the LCAP. The new regulations are now adopted, and some key changes include requirements that school districts describe in the LCAP how district-wide and school-wide services are principally directed towards and are effective in making the district's goals for its unduplicated pupils. In addition to describing what actions will be taken, the regulations add a requirement to provide the basis for this determination, including any alternative considered and supporting documentation. There's continuing concerns in regard to proportionality and how best to meet the needs of students while balancing the need for judicious budgeting of expenditures. Now Jocelyn will discuss the changes since the August presentation.
Thank you, Diana. Now that we've looked at the changes since the state budget adoption, let's take a look at the changes that have occurred since our district budget was presented in August. Settlements have been reached with our bargaining units, and those salary adjustments also affected statutory benefits. Additionally, the health and welfare renewal costs have been updated. Adjustments have been made to revenues and expenditure for revised award letters, and we have made changes in communication expenditures to respond to the updated E-rate information. We know that revenues do the heavy lifting when it comes to budget. At approximately $162.7 million, LCFF is the largest portion of the budget and represents about 80% of total revenues. Federal revenues are $8.8 million. Other state revenue is the second-largest source of income, and is approximately $23.9 million, and it reflects changes in mandated cost, lottery, and the California Partnership Academies. Other local income is projected at $7.5 million and incorporates additional funds received for the Orange County Career Pathways Partnership, City of Irvine Challenge Math, and Tustin Public School Foundation grants. Overall, revenues are projected at $203 million. Budgeting for expenditures is always a balancing act. There is always a greater demand than there are resources available. Expenditures for salaries and benefits have increased for the current year primarily due to bargaining unit negotiations. Books and supplies have changed based on award letters and school site budget adjustments. The remaining categories reflect minimal changes due to budget adjustments. Total expenditures are projected to be $210 million. Now Toni will go over the fiscal health planning factors.
Thank you, Jocelyn. So basically, what does it take to develop a prudent budget? In order to obtain a healthy budget, there are several planning factors that we have taken into consideration in updating the budget for the first interim report. Factors such as step-on-column increases, utility cost changes, alignment with the district's LCAP, maintaining fiscal flexibility, best practices with regards to conservative assumptions, consideration of Prop 30 taxes in terms of ending those taxes, increased pension costs, maintaining core programs, LCAP proportionality, enrollment projections, stakeholder communication, LCFF factors, and of course, the district priorities. So when it comes to developing the multi-year projection, there are three key factors to take into consideration with regards to the district's fiscal health. Deficit spending, fund balances and reserves. So talking about the structural imbalance with regards to deficit spending, not maintaining a balance between meeting the district's expenditure priorities within the revenue projections, as well as judiciously utilizing the district's reserves, is not only difficult but can quickly jeopardize the district's fiscal health. Being careful not to create an ongoing structural deficit in our financial planning is critical towards maintaining our fiscal well-being, and this is a challenge that we're facing. So in viewing the multi-year projections, I just basically want to highlight that overall, revenues are projected to actually decrease about $1.4 billion from 1415 to 1516, and that's primarily due to the fact that there is a lot of one-time revenues approximately in the federal carryover funds from Title I, Title III, and teacher quality, as well as one-time federal or state revenues that carry over for lottery and mandated costs in this year's budget that won't be carried over until next year. I should also mention that the Low Control Funding Formula for 1516 actually reflects a $5 million increase for the 1516 fiscal year. Revenues for 1617 are showing basically about a $5.5 million increase, and that's primarily due to increased funding from the Low Control Funding Formula. For future years, expenditures are projected to stabilize after factoring out the one-time expenditures and incorporating growth, salaring, benefit commitments, as well as other cost increases and changes. Of greater concern, obviously, is the level of deficit spending that is currently being projected. We know that some of the level of the deficit spending is related to the conservative projections that are dependent on the state funding levels and expenditure assumptions that will change over the course of time. However, even with the level of deficit spending, I think it's important to recognize that the district has a very strong ending fund balance and continues to maintain a stable reserve. So looking at the components of the ending fund balance, first of all, we want to recognize that there are non-spendable reserves that include revolving cash, stores inventory, benefit accounts, as well as accrued vacation. These amounts must be set aside as they have already been committed. So before I go over the remaining reserves, I want to talk about a little bit about SB 858. The first step in this bill calls for something that we really already do in regards to, but it's in a more formal process, and that is beginning with the 1516 fiscal year, all school districts will be required to identify their minimum level of economic uncertainty for each year, and then after identifying that, identify those balances in excess of the minimum levels. And as part of the public hearing process in the budget planning process, the school districts are required to basically substantiate the rationale and reasons for those excess balances. In reality, we've always done this way. It's been a requirement that we've done internally, as well as the state's required. So what does it take to actually, so what are the benefits in regards to maintaining a higher level of reserves? Basically, it acts as a safety net of protection. It provides for protection against the volatility of state revenues, protection to cover increased costs for events such as disasters, lawsuits, et cetera, maintaining financial flexibility and making a recovery for economic events, as well as providing protection against fluctuating enrollments, and also enhancing our district's bond rating and thereby lowering our interest costs and debt in the future. And speaking of that, I just want to kind of let the board know that last week, we received news from both Standard &amp; Poor's and Moody's with regards to ratings on our Measure L issuance, as well as Measure G refinancing. S&amp;P, Standard &amp; Poor's, maintains our district's AA rating, which is very good, and indicated that it references our stable economy and the district's strong historical financial performance and the district's strong general fund balance. However, I think we really are most proud of Moody's report in that they upgraded us from a AA to a AA 1+1, which is probably the next step prior to receiving AAA status. Again, that's indication of our strong fiscal practices. Additionally, Moody's upgraded the financings for the 2008 general obligation bond and 2012 general obligation bond, and that's our Measure S bond, which means that should we maintain this fiscal status, we'll actually be paying less in financing charges and costs with regards to those future finances. So with regards to the remaining assigned components of the ending fund balance, there is the uncertain LCFF, which are reserves that all the experts suggest that the school district should maintain and set aside beyond the minimum. These reserves are essentially being planned to be spent down to offset the deficits that we're projecting for the two following years. IRP, basically our federal one-time revenues that we've received to pay retiree health benefits, a portion of those costs, and will be exhausted after next year's budget. The pension liability reserve basically recognizes the impact of the increased pension cost contributions expected from school districts. The facility maintenance reserve recognizes the significant costs that we expect to incur with regards to maintaining and improving our athletic fields and so forth. Technology is obviously a major costly endeavor, and Measure S funds paid for the initial technology related to classroom teaching stations. In the future, we know that the general fund will have to pay for the additional cost increases with relationship to maintaining those classrooms. The restricted balance reserves are essentially for categorical carryovers, and those programs have very specific purposes. And then finally, you have the reserve for economic uncertainty, and it's that reserve that basically the state uses as a gauge to measure a minimum level necessary to absorb the unanticipated costs going forward. The reality is that this amount here basically represents less than two months of salaries and benefits. So with regards to staying on target, earlier, we talked about the challenges that we face with regards to balancing rising expectations in light of the additional funding that we have received and will be receiving. We have also know that staying on target in these ever-changing times while providing for a quality educational program is our goal. We also want to recognize that our achievements can only happen with everybody working together for that common goal. And that's what we've done. I think, finally, I just want to talk about, just mentioned that we've left at everybody's desk the FICMAT Fiscal Health Analysis Checklist that kind of just talks about, what I've talked about is as indicators of districts who are in good fiscal conditions. And so I want to leave that for the board. And then finally, in certifying that the 2014-15 first interim report is positive, we want to recognize the board understands its fiduciary responsibilities in maintaining a positive fiscal solvency, both not in the current year but in the subsequent two years, as well as making whatever changes will be necessary to maintain a positive certification. And with that, we're open to questions.
Do you need a motion?
And you need a motion. Yes, you do.
So we need a motion to certify that we will...
Positive certification.
Okay.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Program Improvement Year Three LEA Plan. Oh, I just have one comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to say that that little guy sort of reminds me of the Gecko from Geico.
I was going to say Toni.
Not the Geico, you know that little Gecko?
Reaching, that was...
I don't know. It was very cute. It really helps having the little entertainment intertwined with the budget presentation.
It opens it up a little bit.
Exactly. Not that we don't find you stimulating, but... Okay. Program Improvement Year Three LEA Plan Evidence of Progress. Is there a report, or do we just... Okay. So do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Special Education Community Advisory Committee representative, we have one applicant.
I move approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. To go back a screen on here. It's interesting. Okay. I see why you printed it out all the time.
I'll move adoption of the consent calendar and senitarity.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Student number 2014-15-06, stipulated expulsion with conditions. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Student number 2014-15-07, stipulated expulsion with conditions.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Student number 2014-15-08, stipulated expulsion with conditions.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And student number 2014-15-09, stipulated expulsion with conditions.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board member comments? Okay, seeing...
Well, I'll jump in with some comments. I guess I'll let you know what I do with my phone during the meeting, since Roger brought that up. I have two adult children who, since I've been on the board now for 12 years, have a strong interest in education policy. One has lived for eight years, almost nine, in Michigan, and the other, who's lived for almost five in New York. And it's interesting sometimes to text with them and see what their perspectives are on different issues we discuss. And it's actually relevant to one of the things that I wanted to talk about tonight, and that is the Common Core testing. I think most people, if they're an educational professional, will tell you that the standards in Common Core are superior to the former standards that we had to deal with. But I think the challenge is coming, the things that is for us right now is the assessment tests, and the assessments are a lot less mature. New York in particular has been already testing people with Common, for two years, using Common Core standards tests, and the results have not really worked out well, particularly since they've tried to use those results in evaluating teachers and in other ways that the test is really just not yet ready to be used for. And I think we need to be aware of this as we start down this process of using tests formally for the first time. We've been using, we've been working with these tests, we've been practicing with these tests, we've been giving feedback to the test makers, but this spring is going to be the first time that we do this, and I think we need to be careful to not give that much weight in terms of how we evaluate and think of our schools. Another just interesting aside, and I should have, I think maybe this would be a good lesson for Assemblyman Wagner. My son, for the last year, has worked in New York State Assembly as an aide to two different state assembliesmen. And as you know, education is a popular issue, and everybody in the state legislature would like to find that silver bullet bill that they can carry that will improve education and make everything look better. And since we do a lot of really good things in Tustin Unified, more than once, he's called me up and said, "Well, what is that that you do with this?" Or "What is that that you do with RTI?" Or some of the other things that we do. And what I've told my son, which is what I would tell any member of the state legislature, the problem is, you can make a school district do something, but you cannot make it do it well. For somebody to do something well, they have to become convinced that, in fact, it's going to help students and it's going to be in the best interests of those students. And that's how we've approached the things that we've done in our district, and I think that makes all the difference. It's a little bit of a disappointing answer to somebody who is working for a legislator who wants to find an interesting bill to carry, but it's the truth. And... And finally, I wanted to say one thing about, we talked about this is the year of connection, and one statistic that I think is still valid that just gives an indicator of how well are we connecting. There are roughly 28 school districts in Orange County. For each of those school districts, the internet services go through the Orange County Department of Education. Our percentage of that internet usage, the last time I heard, is 25%. We use one-quarter of the capacity compared to the other 27 school districts. So, I think that shows the level of connection that we're bringing about with our students and the transformation that we're making in education here in the Tustin Unified School District. And I'm very pleased to be starting, along with, you know, Governor Brown and I are starting our fourth terms together. He got a little head start on me when I wasn't even out of college yet. He was serving his first term, but I've caught up with him now, and I'm looking forward to the next four years. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, there was an article in the LA Times, December 2nd, which I'll ask Dean to make a copy of to send out to everyone, and the headline on it is, "Can Schools and Unions Work Together?" And the whole, in summary, what the article says is basically that when there's cooperation between the unions and the district, student performance improves.
Wow.
Shocking. Absolutely shocking. I don't know how much money this study cost, but it's an article that lays it all out, and I'll make sure that everybody gets a copy of it.
Well, I just want to also thank or congratulate Lynn and John on your reelection. It's a pleasure to serve with you, and it's very great that you're back for another term, or two or three. Okay, I think we are... Tammy?
Okay.
And we are moving to adjournment in memory of Gary O... Oh, boy. Austin. Gary Austin, interim chief professional officer, Boys and Girls Club of Tustin.
Can I just make a comment about that? I have been on the Boys and Girls Club Board for the last eight and a half or nine years, and Gary's an outstanding individual. His life was the Boys and Girls Club. He would do anything that was necessary at that club. He held different positions, and towards the end, he was the interim chief planning officer, the official that ran the daily aspect. Even while he was ill this past year, he would come in and still work and do the things that were necessary while he was undergoing radiation and chemotherapy treatments. Unfortunately, when he was first diagnosed, the diagnosis was terminal, as it was, and he made it probably almost a year longer than they had first told him. It's a huge loss, not just to the Boys and Girls Club, but to the community.
We have a motion for adjournment, then.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1776.83]